are trustees Amos Baxter Bryden then Gray Oliver Rocha Shuttleworth and Zhang as well as student trustees for Balin and Alim Zanoff and trustees Daniele and I don't see trustee Ahmed yet okay trustee Daniele is joining us online and we expect trustee Ahmed to arrive momentarily director Ennis please let us know which staff are in attendance this evening.
Thank you Chair Collard and good evening everyone we have a full slate of senior staff here this afternoon or this evening to support the meeting.
Thank you tonight I will be honoring the land Halton as we know it today is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis from the Anishinaabe to the Atawandaron the Haudenosaunee and the Métis these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in Indigenous history as we gather today on these treaty lands we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions land waters plants animals ancestors that walked before us and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist we would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us this evening we will be having a presentation from members of our staff as well as Nancy Rowe to celebrate changes to this honoring the land acknowledgement and I'm really looking forward to it and so welcome to you for coming tonight and we look forward to hearing from you at the first meeting of each month we formally acknowledge the history and heritage months and days identified by the government of Ontario please join us in celebrating and supporting the diverse communities that exist within our Halton community this month we recognize Black Heritage and History Month and this month director Ennis will be speaking to our Heritage and History Month.
Thank you Chair Collard it is my pleasure and my honor to speak to Black History Month this year's theme is Black Excellence a heritage to celebrate a future to build centering and illuminating the diverse voices and lived experiences of Black Canadians provides a deeper understanding of historical and contemporary realities contributions and triumphs which is part of the Canadian history Canada has a rich Black history dating back to the earliest recording of Matthew de Costa in the early 1600s Black History Month is a time when we recognize the invaluable contributions of Black people from across the African diaspora to the world as we know and appreciate it not many realize that our lives have been enriched tremendously by the ingenuity creativity and inventions of Black people from the tree tree light traffic signal refrigerated trucks automated elevated doors color monitors for desktop computers to the shape of the modern iron and board the clothes ringer blood bank laser treatment for cataracts home security systems and the super soaker for children's toy many objects and services we use every day were invented by Black men and women Thomas Edison often gets credit for inventing the light bulb but in reality dozens of inventors were working to perfect the commercial lighting one of those inventors was Louis Latimer in 1868 the Black inventor was hired at a law firm that specialized in patents in 1868 while there he taught himself mechanical drawing and was promoted from the office to a draftsman in his time at the firm he worked with Alexander Graham Bell on the plans for the telephone Latimer then began his foray into the world of lighting it is said that at the time Edison was working on the light bulb model with a paper filament the filament was very thin and did not last very long in Edison's experiments the paper would burn down in 15 minutes or so rendering the light bulb unrealistic for practical use it was Latimer who created a light bulb model that used a carbon filament which lasted longer and made light bulb production cheaper because of Latimer's innovation more people can afford to light their homes and so we thank him for his contribution to the light that we experience today and who can also forget hidden figures that spotlight the great contributions of a group of Black mathematician women who helped to get humanity to the moon in 1978 the Ontario Black History Society was established its founders include Dr Daniel G Hill of course we know his son Lawrence Hill Wilson Obrooks who presented a petition to the city of Toronto to have February formally proclaimed as Black History Month in 1979 the first ever Canadian proclamation was issued by Toronto the first Black History Month in Nova Scotia was observed in 1988 and later renamed African Heritage Month in 1996 in 1993 the Ontario Black History Society successfully filed a petition in Ontario to proclaim February as Black History Month following that success Rosemary Sadler president of the Ontario Black History Society introduced the idea of having Black History Month recognized across Canada to the Honorable Jean Augustine the first Black Canadian woman elected to Parliament in December 1995 the House of Commons officially recognized February as Black History Month in Canada following a motion introduced by Dr Augustine the House of Commons carried the motion unanimously the HDSP is proud to celebrate Black History Month thank you.
Thank you very much director Ennis that was a rich history I love it now we are up to item 1.4 approval of the agenda trustee Baxter would you make a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes please.
Trustee Bryden would you like to second this motion?
Yes.
Is there any discussion regarding the approval of the agenda? Seeing none the agenda is approved by unanimous consent are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest for this evening's agenda seeing none we are now up to item 2.0 delegations and presentations to the board and I will pass the gavel to trustees Gray and Shuttleworth for the Inspire Awards.
Thank you so again it's my honor to recognize the two nominees tonight that have been awarded the Inspire Award so these two individuals have decided to receive their awards at the schools but we thought we should take a moment to recognize them in public as well so we'd like to give a really big shout out to Karen Montgomery of New Central Primary School and Paul Henderson of WI Dick Primary School congratulations to you both for your outstanding support of students in the Halton District School Board we would also like to send a special shout out to Susan Thrasher who ensures that we as trustees have everything that we need to assess the nominees a quick reminder for everybody out there watching tonight please continue to nominate people or organizations who support our students and their achievements through their actions within the Halton District School Board the nomination is found on our website and everybody in Halton can nominate everybody in the community families neighbors organizations staff students and volunteers all nominations are greatly received by the trustees and we look forward to presenting some more awards next month thank you very much.
Thank you very much trustee Shuttleworth now we move on to item 2.2 the student trustee report and I know they've had a very busy time I was at the Student Senate last night for about 45 minutes maybe half an hour and boy oh boy the stuff that they were getting up to I don't know how they got out of there before midnight so trustee Shrebalan and Alum Zanoff we look forward to your report.
Thank you hi Chair Collard so good evening to all trustees staff parents and students it's a great privilege to be speaking to all of you today I hope that everyone had a great start to semester too and today trustee Shrebalan and I are proud to present our report for the month of February to begin with I'll give an update on the Senate meeting which was previously mentioned which occurred yesterday night on February 6th we had a great turnout with more than 120 people in attendance including the student trustee candidates who invited to join us and three awesome guest speakers all of whom are present in this room big thank you to Chair Collard Vice Chair Oliver and Director Ennis for tuning in presenting their insightful speeches it was a great opportunity for interested students to learn more about what student trustees role entails from the perspective of collaboration of trustees and senior staff apart from that we introduced two new initiatives to our Senate this year which are the Elections Booth and the Halton Youth Leadership Symposium trustee Shrebalan will provide more information about the election booths but for those of you who are not familiar with the Halton Youth Leadership Symposium it is an event organized every year by the Student Senate for aspiring leaders across the Halton District School Board in grade seven and eights usually hosted around the month of May our Directors of Operations Sabrina Nadeem and Kalina Hawken have been hard at work with initial planning and appreciate all the effort that they have put in to provide the structure to this year's events.
Moving on to all things surrounding student trustee elections trustee Alum Zanov myself are HDSP Student Staff Student Senate Staff Advisors and the Communications Department as well as our Elections Officer Ashia Dewan have been busy preparing for the annual student trustees elections for the 2024 2025 student trustees starting with on Tuesday January 30th we have the annual student trustee candidates meeting with over 30 plus candidates in attendance and 40 plus candidates interested in the role itself on February 5th interested candidates began campaigning and our Elections Officer alongside the student trustees held drop-in Q and A sessions every day this week to support candidates and ease some of their stress that Sultan and I are very well familiar with moving onwards for the 2024 elections a priority has been to increase student voter turnout across the board especially in elementary schools which carry majority weight in the election process but have some of the lowest number of students voting one method of doing so is through a slideshow and video that will be that was just filmed and will be sent out the week of February 14 to 16 for SAT classroom teachers to showcase their this year's student trustee candidate resources to their students this will allow voters to make an informed decision when casting their votes for their student representatives as a result of the 2023 in-person elections pilot process pilot project by our predecessors trustee Wang and Rogerall all 81 HDSP schools with eligible voters will have Elections Boots this year these boots will be run by senators to answer students' questions and will be accompanied by posters and I voted stickers to encourage students to vote although students will be continuing to vote online we hope this effort will increase awareness of the February 22nd Voting Day and encourage more students to participate in the democratic process of voting for their student trustees.
To provide an update on a topic we didn't get the chance to present during the last board meeting on February or sorry January 12th we have the meeting with the CEO of Halton Learning Foundation Mark Claire we informed him about the introduction of each left month to our Senate team and the initial planning we have completed to set the groundwork for the rest of the year one major point of discussion with Mark was the idea of establishing a centralized fundraising theme to create a communications consistency and a sense of identity and branding for the foundation similar to for example what the Canadian Cancer Society does with Relay for Life we discussed numerous ideas that will be considered for implementation and will bring further updates on this idea in the future.
Furthermore on January 31st trustee Alum Zanov and I filmed the annual Human Rights Symposium recap video it was a pleasure to have the opportunity to reflect on the insightful student panel held last December we are excited to include to Equity Committee members panelists and empowered student audience members in the video as well in addition to these endeavors alongside the Board of Trustees and Senior Team trustee Alum Zanov and I had the valuable learning opportunities from Opsbuzz Public Education Symposium to the multi-year strategic planning PD session it was an honor to gain more insights in the roles of AI branding hate communications and food literacy in the HDSP system as well as a nice opportunity to connect with fellow HDSP trustees surrounding us and those across the province on that note trustee Alum Zanov and I conclude this evening's student trustee report and leave to attend another Ontario Student Trustees Association Conference this weekend we are excited to roll back on our contributions and what we have learned thank you.
Thank you so much do we have any questions for the student trustees this evening seeing none I congratulate you on yet another great report and have a wonderful weekend with all the learning and make sure that you get enough sleep now it is my pleasure to welcome Superintendent Petco Tammy Hardwick and Gabby Etcheveria along with our treaty partner Nancy Rowe to deliver the land acknowledgement presentation.
Thank you very much Chair Collard if I may as Gabby and Tammy are setting up here I would like to make some introductions first of all joining us this evening is Gabriela Etcheveria she is our System Principal of Indigenous Rights in Education and Tammy Hardwick our Instructional Program Lead in Indigenous Education and of course some of you may not need this introduction but I would like to welcome Nancy Rowe Nancy are you online with us now can you hear us okay I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Wonderful thank you Nancy Rowe first of all is the Director of a beautiful roundhouse in the new Credit First Nation community a Mississauga Ojibwe of the Anishinaabe Nation located in the new Credit First Nation you may or may not know but she holds an Honors' BA in Indigenous Studies and Political Science as well as a Master's Degree of Environmental Resource Studies at the University of Waterloo beyond those credentials though she's an educator a consultant someone who is extremely respected and who absolutely speaks truths and inspires all of us to ensure that we speak our truths and is an avid committed dedicated partner in ensuring that Halton District School Board as an education system really aligns with the important work of Indigenous Rights in Education having said that thank you so much Nancy for joining us this evening and I turn it over to Gabby.
Good evening everyone thank you Superintendent Petco through you Chair Amy Collard to the Board of Trustees to Director Curtis Ennis and the Senior Team and the student trustees we want to begin by offering words of appreciation and gratitude for the invitation to be here to offer you an update and about a revised land acknowledgement for the Halton District School Board so we also want to extend gratitude similar to what Superintendent Petco just offered for the invitation to have the educational consultant that we work with Nancy Rowe but who also happens to be in the capacity of treaty partner representation with us here and so we want to thank you for that invitation it is directly in alignment with our work and a right process a respectful process that we greatly appreciate Nancy offers her time to help the work of education and Indigenous rights and like many of you does it out of passion and dedication for future generations she sits on many tables across the province that make decisions and informs them of Indigenous rights one of the tables in which is the Ontario Human Rights Commission where she offers help about understanding Indigenous rights so needless to say she's a very busy lady and responding to your invitation here tonight speaks to her dedication to the field of education which is also similar to the dedication that you're all each showing this evening Nancy the commitment to future generations living on the Mississauga Territory your family's territory is noticed and shared by our Board and our department so we thank you for being here I also wish to acknowledge that when the treaty partner is in the space of gathering it's respectful to defer to the treaty partner to offer an opening to initiate and welcome the members of the gathering and so this evening through the graceful understanding for the purpose of this presentation Nancy has permitted me to begin with our talk had we been in a different space we would normally just defer to her so thank you Nancy so I'm going to begin introduce myself and then I will allow Tammy and Nancy to also join me in this so I will introduce myself in the way that my elders have taught me so My name is Gabriela Etcheveria I was born in the Agita Territory which is now in considered to be the northern part of Chile and Argentina and so I am I often say a relative from the south I have come to be on this territory through refuge and so for many very personal reasons very very grateful to be able to be here I have the privilege to work in the role of System Principal for the Indigenous Rights in Education Department and I get to work alongside Superintendent Petco and this amazing person beside me the Indigenous Education Lead Instructional Program Leader for Indigenous Education Tammy Hardwick we also work in close collaboration and consultation with treaty partner who happens to be here this evening Nancy Rowe as well as the Halton District School Board's Indigenous Education Advisory Council they're a small but very mighty and very supportive team and our department has a responsibility to work in consultation with community and so we're grateful for them as well and I think that is all I'm going to say so I'll pass it over to Tammy.
Just a little bit bonjour Tammy Hardwick condition of costs Adawa Anishinaabe and Dow Shishigwaning Menoromeneseng Endonshaba Makuan Dorem so I am Tammy Hardwick and as Gabby said I've been working as the Indigenous Education Lead and Instructional Program Leader for a few years here and I'm Odawa Anishinaabe from Shishigwaning on Manitouland Island and that's where I'm going to leave that bit of introduction and I'll allow Nancy to step in here. You gotcha.
I'm glad to meet you. Bonjour. Good afternoon. I'm glad to meet you. 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 Maybe we can just park that because I'm, I'm, I'm certain that there's going to be things heard here tonight that are going to require more awareness and, and education. And we, we're in the midst of developing a resource for the system so that we don't have to learn in a sort of a little bit of a half an hour snippet. Really, we just want to show you a bit of history, show you the land acknowledgement that I heard read. And that, this land acknowledgement, the old one, I think, which is the next slide. Yeah, so Nick and I developed this, like I said, over a decade ago. And in the development of this, you'll see differences in, in the land acknowledgement that we have today. Keep in mind, keep in mind that we didn't know now what we know then. But we also, and in reaching out to the department, we have a responsibility when we are putting something out, particularly when it involves Indigenous people, Indigenous issues, that we have, we have a commitment to correct, explain, be responsible, provide the resources to correct those things. The power of a land acknowledgement to educate is something that I educate around a lot. And one of the things that I want to say is that at this time, we did not have all the history, the fact and evidence-based history, which I spent three years researching, that's what all those books are back there, researching. What is the true history of the Michisagig as told by the Michisagig? And so we're so lucky because a lot of our knowledge is in our institutions, is in oration and is, is, is in other text forms like say petroglyphs, petroforms. There's a process to engage knowledge. Some of you have been in that process when you've come to the lodge. And so my, my friend, Dave, sorry, Doug Williams-Bah, he is a Michisagig from up to Lake Som and he is one of our greatest historians, trained like me in West and Anishinaabe, and he would orate. Before he passed, and he passed just two years ago, I, two years ago. Before he passed, I bugged the heck out of him. I'm sure I'm not the only one that did bug the heck out of him to say, Doug, will you please put it in text so that we can use it as a resource? And this is what he came up with. On this slide, what I want to share is that we did not derive this land acknowledgement, which is fact and evidence-based. We did not derive it solely from Doug's book, but also several, several resources. So one of the things about a land acknowledgement is to use good, credible, reliable resources to produce any, anything about Indigenous people. I would say that like across, but especially in a land acknowledgement. Because we don't, because, I don't know how to say it, like there's somewhat of a forgiveness around producing not fact and evidence-based information because we did scramble to create land acknowledgements. But we can't just say, and this is where we need education. If this land acknowledgement goes out ahead of time, without properly and adequate PD, educative sessions even for this table, you are going to receive questions that you are not going to be able to answer, just on terminology. It would be remiss of myself and the department to set something out where you could be questioned on why or not to add a rend in the new land acknowledgement. This is where I highly, highly recommend that some education happens. In part, I'm talking too much. I'm sorry, you guys. I always do this. In part, the land acknowledgement is, is a reconciliatory act. The land acknowledgement is derived from what we call in education, the education framework, rights framework. I think I'm getting ahead of myself, please. Anything you want to say?
The only thing I'll add, Nancy, is that just to make the board aware that the new revised land acknowledgement has also been shared and approved to the Indigenous Education Advisory Council for Halton.
And so there, that's the new land acknowledgement. If you have questions, concerns, anything, you know, reach out to the department. We are in the midst of developing a resource to accompany this so that it becomes the educative tool that it was, that is meant to be. You'll see it's different. I could, any question that could be asked on there, I and the team would be able to respond to those questions. What this land acknowledgement does is provides accurate history. It corrects the romanticism that exists in others, that acknowledges the first people, the original people. It gets beyond acknowledging and honoring. I think now that we all know we're in the era of reconciliation, TRC, Andret, we have an awesome Indigenous education policy at Halton that we are, we are moving beyond sort of the honoring and acknowledging and getting more into now, what is the work that we're going to do? Part of the work is building our awareness and education around some of the things that you see in, in this land acknowledgement. Gabby, Tammy?
Thanks, Nancy. We're just out of flow now because you basically set up our presentation. No, that's okay. Better coming from you than us. Yeah. So if there's anything that you would like to add, Tammy?
Just that we have it translated in French and then it will, we're also looking at getting it translated into Anishinaabe Mwen, which is the language of this land. So stay tuned for that. That'll take time because it's not an easy process to translate from English words when it's a descriptive language. And then we're moving into this map. Would you like me to continue or Nancy, would you like to speak to this first?
Yes, carry on.
Okay. So this map might be familiar to you. It was great to see Fred in the room, who was a part of the process, the consultation process with the long-term, long-term accommodation planning department and treaty partners. So we worked with Nancy to create this map and we use it quite often as an educational tool. And as you can see beside it is 1.1 from the HDSB Indigenous Education Policy. And, and we have it up here to really show you exactly where Halton is located, right? You can see that Halton, the borders of Halton are directly within, entirely within Michisagig, ancestral treaty entitled lands. And, and while our previous land acknowledgement made mention and recognized many different nations and Indigenous peoples within that land acknowledgement, it's important to note that they came into this territory under treaty, right? With the Michisagig. Absolutely, they still hold importance to this land and would, you know, have history with it. But we, we just always need to understand the inherent rights holders. And to build a little bit more knowledge around what inherent rights are, the Michisagig hold that within the territory that we are in and why we have Nancy here who is speaking. And I also introduced myself. I'm Anishinaabe as well. But this isn't my, my treaty territory. These are not my ancestral treaty entitled lands. You know, I, in my introduction, I talked about where I come from and that's where I hold inherent rights. And that's important to know that just because I'm Anishinaabe, just because I'm Indigenous, doesn't mean that I have the right to speak on behalf of our treaty partner, an inherent rights holder. And that is also why the Michisagig, you know, have those rights to make decisions and to help inform us and why that relationship that we have is so important. And then Nancy, if you'd like to add any more, it'd be fantastic.
I think we just got to leave it there in the interest of time. I think we have one more slide for further education. If there's, I'm sure there's things that you saw and read that you may not be aware of and things like that. This is what we operate from in, in your board. This is what we call is framework for reconciliation and education. Not huge books or anything like that. If you want to start learning, what are they talking about? What are these terms? All of these things refer to these, these resources. And I look forward, I know we dropped a lot on you, like 15 minutes, boom. I'm looking forward to our, our learning journey together. Any questions, things that you have, just reach out to Jenny or the department. But hold tight, we are working on developing PD because the history involved in this is extensive. You're talking about 15,000 years of history at that very land. And so the other thing I think I, I wanted to sort of leave this, leave this meat with was that I'm really, I want to express my migwe, the gifts that Halton has given. And I want to acknowledge this really beautiful, purposeful, mutually beneficial relationship that I have. I don't necessarily have a relationship with the board. I have a relationship with people. And that this, these small acts, if you will, are returning us back to that rightful relationship that was outlined in our law and in our treaties about how we were going to conduct ourselves as kin in, in our territories. So I say migwich to that, to that, and I say migwich to the things that allow us to be able to do this work, human and non-human. We're all here for grandchildren, whether we have them or not. And really, this is the work that we're laying down so that our grandchildren won't have to sit in a land acknowledgement PD because they're going to know when somebody comes in and says, "Bujon", "G'da kanada indishin khas makuan doorem, michisagig ojibwe Anishinaabe kwe endau." Leave it at that.
On behalf of the board of trustees and senior team assembled here, I want to thank you very much, Nancy, for being with us here tonight. It was the perfect place for you to be this evening. I am so pleased that you were able to join us. And I look forward to learning further about all of the wonderful history, 15,000 years of history. I'm sure we will be partnering with you on our multi-year plan. And I, and I would like to welcome you to that as well. And so on behalf of us all, I say migwich. Yes, I need to also thank the staff. I'm sorry about that. Tammy and Gabby and Jenny, thank you very much. Now we are up to item three of our consent agenda. For approval, we have Halton District School Board Minutes Meeting, January 24th. For receipt, we have the following items. Order paper, board report schedule, policy and governance procedure review schedule, administrative procedure review schedule, and correspondence to the board, letter from the Office of Adam Vancouver, MP Milton, in response to the HDSB Joint Participation and Community-Based Events Letter from January 2024, and letter from the Office of Mayor, Mary Ann Weed-Moore, City of Burlington, in response to the HDSB Joint Participation and Community-Based Events Letter, January 2024. Be it resolved that the HDSB approve the consent agenda and receive the information items for November 15, 2023. Trustee Gray, would you make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Trustee Shuttleworth, would you second this motion?
I certainly would.
Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion? Seeing none, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. We are now up to section four, items for ratification action. Our first item for this evening is item 4.1.1, School Year Calendar, 2024 to 2025, Report 24014, submitted by Associate Director Salmini. I'm going to put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approved the summary of statutory and board-designated holidays and professional activity days for 2024, 2025, as recommended through consultation with the School Year Calendar Committee as outlined in Report 24014. Trustee Rocha, would you make this motion?
I would.
Trustee Zhang, would you second this motion?
Yes, please.
Associate Director Salmini, would you like to speak to this report?
Thank you. Good evening, trustees. I spoke to the report at the last board meeting, so I don't have anything further.
Thank you, Associate Director Salmini. Is there any debate? Seeing none. Please cast your votes. Trustee Daniele? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm hitting the confirm button, but it's taking a minute to go through.
Okay, thank you. And that passed unanimously. Item number 4.1.2, 2024 Boundary Reviews, submitted also by Associate Director Salmini. I believe you will be wanting Manager Tebow to conduct this. Thank you. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board complete a boundary review for ERA 101 Aldershot, formerly ERA 100, with the objective of reducing the number of moves, moves experienced by French immersion students in Aldershot. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board direct staff to complete a boundary review for ERA 302 Bristol, formerly ERA 120, and ERA 304 Boyne, formerly ERA 127, to integrate communities to their local school, establish new boundaries for Milton Southeast, number 13 Public School, and balance enrollments at, at established schools for both the French and English programs. Trustee Bryden, would you make this motion?
I would.
Trustee Ahmed, would you second this motion?
I second that.
General Manager Tebow, would you like to speak to this report?
I'll speak to it very briefly through you, Madam Chair. So for the, the first boundary review in Aldershot, really what we're looking at doing is that we currently have seven and eights right now that are going to Aldershot and then being bounced back to Central. So right now what we're looking is just, let's take one of the moves out and see if there's the ability of rectifying that, just having a smoother transition. So we have already reached out to the community and done a quick little survey to see what their thoughts are. And I suspect that this is more, more than likely going to end up being a pathway number two and a more of an abridged process, just to give you a look into that. So we'll be, if approved by the board, then we'll proceeding on next steps for that one. And for the second boundary review we're proposing, it's very comparable to what we did for Oakville 3 and 5 just recently. So we'll be looking at the area essentially south of Dairy all the way down to Britannia and looking at rebalancing enrollment for some of the high-growth areas that haven't necessarily subsided since we did the, the boundary view for Milton 11 and 12, established boundaries for Milton 13, which we're looking to open in the next few years. And just see if we can better align our French immersion program now that we're seeing enrollment stabilize overall. So that's the intent and that one most certainly will probably be a pathway one. And we'll be looking to probably start it around the same time as we did with the last one in the, in the fall. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I do see a speaker on the list, Trustee Bryden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and thank you. I am happy to see the, the move forward to, to simplify the French immersion stream in Aldershot. The, you know, longstanding, in a couple of years now, the South Burlington Boundary Review has been on the table and I've certainly had questions of, when is that coming? So would love to, to hear that publicly. When, when do we expect a South Burlington Boundary Review?
A few, Madam Chair, to Trustee Bryden, I, I, I think it'll probably be in the next rounds of boundary reviews. Right now, one of the, the things that we're looking at are different options. You know, similar to what we've seen in North Oakville as well as, as Milton is, we're, we're having a little bit of a balancing act to, to accomplish between the English program and the FI program. And for South Burlington in this area particularly, we're still trying to run through some options as to what would be a good outcome. Also understanding, you know, it's not just as simple as moving a program to one school wholesale. Like we, we have to understand what the impacts of that are. So I think in short, right now, why you don't see it now is in terms of order priority, like Milton's one that we need to address a little bit more quickly because of the pressures. But also we're, we're trying to explore more options on what we could do in South Burlington to rebalance English and FI in certain schools, also acknowledging that we have the issues of a lot more underutilized space. So, you know, it's, it's trying to better understand what a good outcome would be there. But once we do have a better idea, that's when we'll be proposing some, the initiation of a process.
Did you have a follow-up? Nothing? Okay, I don't see any other speakers on the list, so I'm going to bring up the topic and ask everyone to please cast their votes. Thank you, and that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work on that, General Manager Tebow. Next item is 4.1.3. And that is the, oh, I'm sorry, 4.2.1, for future action. Inspire Awards Policy and Governance Procedure. And this is submitted by Superintendent, Trustee Gray and Trustee Shuttleworth, the co-chairs of the Inspire Awards Ad-Hoc Committee. And I will ask you to speak to this, please.
Yes, thank you very much. As the report reviews, a committee was struck and five meetings took place with this ad hoc committee with the express purpose of looking at the, a review of the Inspire Awards program to ensure that all aspects of the program realize the objective of the program while operating in a manageable way. And I think the manageable was the very key kickoff to this committee being formed last year. I'd like to say thanks to the committee members, the ad hoc committee members of Trustees Ahmed Kallard, Oliver Rocha, Student Trustees Rogério and Wang, and Members-at-Large Associate Director Salmini and Office Supervisor of the Director's Office, Susan Thrasher. Through their work, great amount of dialogue took place with regards to making recommendations to bring improvements forward on the Inspire Award. And in doing so, we recognized that there needed to be changes to the policy and governance procedure. And so that is what we have before us and there is a motion within this report concerning that tonight. So we have had a chance to look at this and I thank the government. So we have had a chance to look at this, and I thank the Governance Committee as well, who had great insight last week and was able to make some very, very informative improvements to the work that had been done. And so the completed work, as it is, is before you for consideration, and happy to take any questions on that.
Thank you, Trustee Gray. Would you like to make a motion to suspend the rules so we can dispense with this item tonight?
Yes, I would. Both Co-Chair Shuttleworth and I would like to do that. Thank you.
Yes. Is there any debate? Trustee Rocha.
I have a question. So not to the new motion on the table, but a question regarding the revised policy and the revised GP.
Can we wait until we voted on suspending the rules so that the motion that's on the floor, because the other motion isn't on the floor and this one is?
So I'd rather not, not yet.
Okay.
Only because I am willing to support suspending the rules, depending on the answer to my question. So if that's okay. Okay. So thank you to everyone who worked on these two documents. High level, what were the changes that were most notable in the policy? What were the most notable changes that were made to the policy and to the governance procedure?
Okay, I think we simplified it. We made it more time-efficient, more manageable. And I think in the whole process of the award system, there's no longer a scoring system so much as there is a in favor and not in favor.
Okay, follow-up. So where did we land on as far as student trustees being able to be nominated or not nominated? Is that, because I couldn't quite find that in the...
Yeah, they are considered to be not able to be nominated. And I think it refers to publicly elected trustees. So maybe they've been collected within that group.
And so just also to follow up on Trustee Gray's comments there, I know Trustee Rocha, that Trustee Gray and I have also been looking over the Q and A that's on the website right now and updating that to ensure there is clarity in recognizing the student trustees as being part of the process, so they are no longer eligible to be nominated.
Okay, thank you. I will support the motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you. And seeing no other speakers, I will, look, is it the next topic, I hope? It's always nice when you read my mind. And please vote on suspending the rules. Very much, that is supported unanimously. And now we go to the main motion, and I will put that on the floor. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board adopt the amended Inspire Awards policy and governance procedure with the recommendations listed in Report 24020, and that all prior versions be revoked. Trustee Gray, would you like to make a motion to approve this motion?
Yes, I would.
Trustee Shuttleworth, would you second this motion?
Yes, I would.
Is there any debate? Seeing none, please cast your votes. And that is also unanimous. Thank you very much. We are now up to section 5.0, Communication to the Board. There are no notices of motion for this evening's meeting, and so we move up to 5.2, the Director's Report.
Thank you, Chair Collard. Excuse me. This afternoon, we have two items for your consideration. One is an update on Glenview that was requested by Board of Trustees at the last meeting, and we are in various stages of approval. I'm going to ask Superintendent Gaudet if he would just elaborate a little further for you.
Yes, thank you, Director Ennis. So it's been some time since we met with the community back in August, and despite, it appears, nothing is going on on the school site. There is much work going on in the background. And so with that, we did communicate with Parent Council recently to reinforce that we do expect to rebuild the new gym there by January 2025. So with that, preliminary site plans have been presented to the city back in December, and we anticipate our official submission for permit applications this month. We're optimistic that we'll tender the project in March. The project still does require ministry approval, and with that, we require site plan approval, permit issuance, and a successful tender close. So we do have a targeted budget of $2.7 million. So should we exceed that, you know, that may cause some schedule concerns that we'll continue to navigate through. So I will say that this is consistent with our original plan. The construction schedule has been compressed from what we presented to the community back in August. We did plan on a year's worth of construction. And so certainly there's a compression there of the construction schedule, but we're still confident that we can pull that off. And we did report back to the Parent Council that despite the lack of progress on the gym, you know, we've made a lot of headway with completing the pathway, relocating the community garden, all in anticipation of this project coming forward. And recognizing that because there has been limited action on the site, we are going to try and provide more frequent updates from our construction team to the principal so that he can communicate out to the community as deemed fit. Happy to take any questions.
Seeing no questions. There we go. Trustee Bryden.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to the Superintendent. That update is much appreciated. Just delving into that compressed construction timeline is, so we're going down from, if we go to tender in March, when do we expect shovels are in the ground? And is that, you're still confident that that's doable by January?
Yeah, thanks for the question through the chair. Yeah, if we tender and close successfully in March, and we can turn around a purchase order quickly, confident that we can be in the ground in April. You know, timing-wise and weather-wise, that's a good time of the year to start construction and hopefully expedite getting the building enclosed and, you know, it's a gymnasium, so it's relatively simple. But it's still, you know, a construction project and complexity to it, but there's not a bunch of finishes that need to go in like a science shop or a tech shop space with specialized equipment, other than conditioning, you know, the building and getting the fit and finish to adhere properly. The schedule's lining up quite nicely to align with how we would like to see a project go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Although Superintendent Gaudet, this year, February would be a good month for construction to start, although I'm not sure what that means for us environmentally. But thank you so much for that. We look forward with anticipation to bring the Glenview community a gym they can be proud of and will serve for many years. The second item, of course, is the Budget Survey. As trustees know, we have a $7.7 million structural deficit. We have been working, sharpening our pencils, and looking at efficiencies and see where we can make the best adjustments as part of the regulation. We have a duty to balance the budget, and so we are seeking consultation to a number of stakeholders. I'm going to ask Superintendent of Business Roxanne Nagoy to speak to this.
Thank you. And through the chair, the trustees, we have launched our annual budget survey on Monday, February the 5th, and will be available on the public website until February 26th. The release was communicated through a news release, social media, as well as on School Messenger for our parent community, and through an email to staff. It will also become available to Parent Involvement Committee, School Council Chairs, Special Education Advisory Committee, Student Trustees, and through them to Student Senate later this week. So we'll provide those communications shortly. And we are asking our parents, guardians, students, staff, and community members to provide input into the budget. As Director Ennis mentioned, we are looking at a new regulation which will not allow us to use accumulated surplus to provide flexibility in the budget process, as we've done in past years. So we are required by regulation to balance the budget next year, and currently we are at a deficit of $7.7 million. The feedback will inform the final decisions around the savings, efficiencies, and areas that require investment, which will be included in the June Budget Draft Report to the Board for approval. And the collated results of the survey will be presented at the Board meeting on April the 3rd.
Thank you, Superintendent Nagoy. And finally, just want to acknowledge that we know that in our world, we have a lot of issues around Islamophobia and antisemitism. We know that this is a remembrance for the attack on the mosque in our country. And we certainly, as a board, want to acknowledge that we are committed to doing the work. To that end, I know that we are in the planning stages of offering both work around Islamophobia and antisemitism for the people in this room who lead the system and are connected to everyone in the system. So I hope that that will become a part of our learning journey so we can better serve communities and that we can ultimately get to a better world. And that concludes my report for today.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Director Ennis? Seeing none, communications from the chair, and I... Trustee Shuttleworth, did you bring in at the last second?
I was going to. I was just going to thank Director Ennis. I know that that was a very last minute. I've received some feedback from the community, and it's really appreciated that he was able to think on his feet and be able to recognize the day. It was January the 30th, which was the anniversary of the mosque shooting in Montreal. So I really do appreciate that. Thank you so much, Director Ennis.
Thank you. So item 5.3, Communications from the Chair, and I have nothing to report this evening. Are there any committee updates to report on? Seeing none, we'll move on to the OPSPA update. Trustees Gray and Daniele, do we have anything to report since Paz?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you very much. And trustee, questions and comments for public session? Trustee Ahmed.
Thank you, Chair. And as Director Ennis rightly said, we at HDSB, everyone is committed to honor recognizing the significantities that represent the diversity and history of all our community members. Can we just have a moment of silence for the Quebec mosque impacted families and the people who were killed?
I think that's very appropriate, yes. Let's do that.
Because we missed it, so.
Thank you, everyone, for observing that moment of silence. Next on our speakers list is Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much, through the chair. I just wanted to thank, offer thanks to those who were involved in the first day organization of the Special Olympics, which I understand to be organized for the next, well, three days in total, I think, two days this week, one day next week. We learned today, as several of us trustees were able to attend, we learned today that there's 180 students each of the three days, and that there's actually a waiting list. It's such a popular event for the students to attend. I was struck today at noon hour when I listened to CBC Radio and heard a live interview with a parent from the Special Olympics at the Milton Belladron, and this parent talked about just what a special day it was for her son in participating in the activities and having so much fun with so many other children. And I think that I then heard another interview repeated at 4 o'clock, and I'm sure it may even be on the news tonight. So tremendous media coverage, but tremendous participation and a tremendous amount of organization. So thank you. And also to the Irma Colson Blue Jay Foundation students, who were the volunteers, and they will be the volunteers for all three days, a different class, I think, each day of grade eight students. We thank them for all of their leadership in assisting with this wonderful event. But again, shout out to those responsible for this event. It was absolutely magnificent. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Gray. Trustee Bryden.
Thank you. With the recent release of the ARKIDS Network Kindergarten Parents Survey, as a parent of a kindergartner, I am curious what we learned out of that survey. And more broadly, I love that we are involved in the ARKIDS Network and in the research that they do across Halton. And I would love to hear a little bit more about how we use their data, that data, in our monitoring and evaluation efforts, and how we could use it going forward. My mind is on future multi-year plan indicators and things of the sort, or operational plan indicators associated with a multi-year plan.
Thank you, Trustee Bryden. Certainly, ARKIDS Network is a valued partner of ours, and we've had a partnership with them for many years. Certainly, the data that they provide us with neighborhood profiles, for example, we have used that in the past to share with our schools and for them to have a look at their particular neighborhood, how, you know, it's very high-level data, but how they can use that to support the students and communities they serve. In terms of the kindergarten information, we have not sort of used that as robustly as perhaps we could have, you know, in the past than even currently, because we have sort of relied on our student census and our Have Your Say survey, which we believe provided a lot more data. One of the things that we are in discussion with the OKN right now is to see where we can find some key indicators that they would like us to include with our current Have Your Say that's coming up this spring, so that we don't have to duplicate the data collection, and then we can have some data sharing between our Board and ARKIDS Network. So that's something that we're actively looking at right now. But in terms of the application of what they have given us, certainly very useful information, but not one that we've extracted a lot of information from, because we've relied more on our internal data points.
Is there a follow-up? Thank you very much. And that concludes our speakers list. So we will now head into private session. Trustee Amos, would you make a motion to go into committee of the whole private session respecting personnel matters and property matters? This meeting is not open to the public pursuant to Education Act 2072.
Yes, I'd like to do that.
Trustee Ahmed, would you like to second this motion?
I do second that.
Are there any objections to moving into private session? Seeing none, the motion is passed by unanimous consent, and we are now in private session. Vice Chair Oliver, the floor is yours.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
We are now in public session and we move to item 6.2, approval of business transactioned in committee of the whole board private session. Stumbling over my own tongue again. Vice Chair Oliver, do we have any business from private session that requires approval?
We have two items for approval tonight. The first is, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the resolutions from the Halton District School Board private session February 7, 2024, respecting negotiations, report 24019. And I so move.
Thank you. Trustee Danielli, would you second this motion?
Thank you. I'd love to.
Is there any debate? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Thank you. That's approved unanimously.
And the second is, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the resolutions from the Halton District School Board private session February 7, 2024, respecting negotiations, report 24022. And I so move.
Thank you. Trustee Gray, would you second this motion?
Yes, I would.
Is there any debate? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
I mean, yes. My confirm button is not working again.
Okay, thank you. And that passes unanimously. We have now reached section 7.0, adjournment. As our agenda is exhausted, I shall call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.